Time being seven o'clock, I call to order the Halifax Planning Board on June 16th. All members present. I would like everyone to know that we are currently recorded for audio and visual. Tonight on the agenda, we have an appointment at 7:00 PM for A R C O R L L C. Barbara Incasia, Nazrela for 69 Summit Street, proposed solar array for a site plan review. We have discussion regarding 12 Sherwood Drive and also Pasture Lane status. We have a number of bills to be paid. And we have no review of meeting minutes. And some correspondence and other business regarding the registered deed signature and the Z V A comprehensive permit. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as read?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as read.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent. Alright, it's seven o'clock. Barbara Incasia?
Can I set this over here just fine?
Yeah, if you don't mind just going a little bit to the side, that way the audience can see it.
Good evening, I'm Rich Riccio from Field Engineering, on behalf of Arcora Energy. To propose solar array, we have a site plan review at 69 Summit Street. This array was previously, or similarly sized array was approved back in 2015 on the same parcel of land and subsequently modified in 2017, where you had represented a new developer for the array on the site. The parcel itself is just under 10 and a half acres. The array is a 1.6 megawatt array, approximately 3,600 panels, within a seven-foot-high chain link fence. The fenced area is just over five acres. We also have equipment pad off the driveway into the site, a 20-foot wide gravel driveway into the site, dedicated driveway for the solar array. As I mentioned, the fencing would be seven foot tall around the array. We have two proposed gates on the site for emergency access. One at the driveway here and one at the rear of the property. Those gates would be equipped with Knox boxes for emergency access with the fire department so they could get into the site. I just put this plan up first, just I'm sure you guys are familiar with where the site is, it's adjacent to the Thomas soccer field. And then this is Harvest Lane on the right-hand side. Just a detailed color up plan here, shows the proposed driveway into the site. We're working to tie into the existing utility pole, which is located here, which feeds the line in Summit Street itself. I did review the previous decision that was given by the planning board for this review, for this product of the site. They had requested 20-foot access aisle around the entire array between the panels and the fence, which we have incorporated into this design. They had also requested some areas of screening plantings.
Vegetation, yeah.
Yes, and I do have a single row of abreviate along the town side, which was in the conditions of approval. And also a staggered row on this portion of the Harvest Lane side. There was also a condition that a portion of this fence along the Harvest Lane property, mainly along the Bryant property, would be a solid vinyl white fence, which we've called out on the plan here.
Excellent.
I'm also, I do propose a double row of staggered plantings here in this area where you could potentially see some, get some visibility from the street. Approximately 80 abreviate plants spaced six feet on center. The other conditions of the approval that the board had previously granted with regards to hours of operation for the construction and stuff, that's pretty typical standard stuff, we take no exception to any of that.
Excellent.
I did submit a stormwater management system report. Basically, this area has always been used as like a farm land. It's going to become more of a meadow type ground cover with the plantings, so there rarely isn't any increase in the rates of runoff on the site. We are proposing erosion control measures for barren construction, and I've also proposed some infiltration trenches along the fence line, just to intercept water that runs off the site prior to it going off property, just to slow it down and induce sheet flow conditions to minimize the potential for any channelized runoff leaving the site. We do have a wetland line on the site, the wetlands were approved back in the end of 2021. There's no equipment within 100 feet of the wetlands. There is a portion of the fence line that's just in the outer 100 feet, probably, this is the fence line here, maybe 80 feet from the wetland line. But there's no proposed panels or anything within.
No work inside, okay.
The pad, the concrete pad here was sized based on the layout of the equipment, there'd be inverter and transformer, and they're also proposing an energy storage box on this as well. Energy storage is becoming more and more prevalent on these solar sites as they move into the next, what we're into this next SMART program now with regards to the state's requirements for these types of projects. We would anticipate all that stuff would be thoroughly reviewed through the fire department and their review of building permit applications as we move forward with the project site.
Would that pad area, would you happen to know, is that much greater than what was proposed the last time?
No, no, it's pretty similar, and that size has been incorporated into the stormwater calculations as well. We do have a crushed stone infiltration trench around the perimeter of that, that would promote recharge of the water, that hits the pad into the ground, that way we're not producing any, there's no runoff off the pad.
Is there an actual, are you opening up the discussion? Is there an actual structure on the pad as far as a shed or big shed?
No, the.
Closed compartment?
The battery storage comes in like a, almost like a storage unit, like a storage box, like you'd see like.
A generator?
Yeah, it's in like a box, I can't think of the container, the storage container, that made like a shipping type of container that it would sit on. Some of them are actually their own modular units, but there's no proposed like shed or structure with a roof or anything on it. It's for the pad-mounted equipment to transfer the power into the grid.
The one question, it does look very similar to how I remember the other one. I like how you seem to address the issues that we had. Do you know if the overall percentage of the lot that you're using now is greater than previous?
I believe the fenced area on the original design was just about five acres as well. I'm going to add about 5.2.
Okay.
I think that's because we pushed the fence out a little bit more and.
Yeah, it gave that extra 20 feet around?
Correct.
Okay.
But for the most part, it's pretty much the same overall footprint from what I've seen on the original plans.
What are you using for setbacks on the solar panels? Like how many feet are they away from the property lines?
They're within the building setback line, which is, I believe it's.
35 on the side, maybe?
That's 20, 30 feet on the sides. We'll have it on this panel, we have.
Well, building setbacks 30 feet.
Yeah, I think, I mean, that's what, I think it's a 30 foot.
Yeah, just making sure.
Yeah, that's what this dash line is here, and it's more, obviously we're not coming up near the street, but it's more on the street. But yeah, that's 30 feet, so we add 20 feet to the fence, and then we have a 10-foot area like over here, for example, where we'd be planting. This would match it into the property line with the vinyl fence along the Bryant property here.
Is it just that property, it's got the vinyl fence?
Yes, I mean, we just went with what was previously requested and conditioned on the project.
Yeah, if I could just like get squared up to speed, so.
The new, new guy?
Yeah, so when the project was in here before, we heard from all the residents around, and those were the concerns. So the staggered line, the extra trees and that vinyl fence were all part of that agreement with the residents.
As far as maintenance go, just a couple of the other ones we've done. How often, once the whole construction and everything is built and completed, how often on a monthly basis or a bi-monthly basis is maintenance required to, that there would be trucks coming in and out?
Yeah, I mean, I would anticipate, first, the site would be monitored offsite, so if there's any issues or something, they would address those and come, like if they notice that a set of modules is down. But for landscaping maintenance, mowing and stuff like that, I would say it's probably every two or three months, most, I mean it's.
Equipment wise, that it'd just be a, let's say a pickup truck or something?
Yeah, that's all, you'd see a landscaping truck come in with a.
No big trucks or.
No, once the thing's up and running, they're pretty self-sufficient.
So it'll just be grass on the panel?
Yeah, it's, we proposed a meadow seed mix with clover and such, that'll just be allowed to grow. The panels are like three feet on the low side and like six or eight feet on the high side.
Is that the same?
Not real high ones.
Is that the same as the other?
Yes, yes, this is a typical fixed tilt. We've been doing some now that are due use, where they're actually farming underneath them, and those are much higher. But this is just a typical fixed tilt array.
The only other concern that I had is the fact that the soccer fields on the other side is an awful lot of children. The board felt previously that a seven-foot fence was high enough for.
Yes.
Safety-wise, because there is an awful lot of children, not even considering the resident-wise, you know. Seven-foot would be enough in the abreviate. What about lighting, is there anything like that?
No, there's nothing, no lighting on the site. There is, like I said, we did provide a row of trees along here, but there's pretty good vegetation on this property line too. When you drive down there, you know, so this will really supplement what's there already.
And the abreviate, there's no sound or anything, but the abreviate would shut everything?
As a break as well, correct.
It's seven-foot on the rear too, going all the way around?
Yeah, it's a seven-foot fence around the hole.
The gates, is there locked access to it?
Yes, yeah.
Other than, like you said, the fire department?
Yeah, they'll have access 24/7 with the Knox box in there, but other than that, it's gated to the public. No one can get in unless they have to.
It's kind of hard to believe, but they did have a fire down on the one on River Street. I don't know what would burn. Yeah, I don't know what would burn, but I don't know, fire department did have to respond down there at one point. You know, what's going to burn?
Probably the, probably the material inside of the solar panel.
The wiring, that type of stuff, insulation.
So you said some of the solar panels are encroaching upon the 30 feet, is that correct?
Oh, no, no, the panels themselves are all 30 feet away from the property line.
Just make.
Yes, yep.
But if he's got, if he's got that.
All the access road, maintenance road, are they asphalt or are they all just?
It's gravel.
Gravel.
If the town wants to put a tay-. You know, that's something we could do, but we would just do a gravel, gravel access.
Was that on the previous one, do you recall? Did they require an asphalt one?
I don't believe that it was asphalt.
This might not have been.
Yeah, because that one wasn't clear, I thought it was my glasses.
I mean, a lot of times, once you go to pull the curb to do the driveway, they may request that out of the P P W or the, just so you, it doesn't break up the edge of the pavement.
Because during the season, there is a lot of traffic with the soccer fields in my head, you can well imagine. Might be further down though.
Is that what you want to ask?
Yeah.
And also, other than the access, there is no more proposed work in the front section other than the array?
Correct.
What's the highest height on any of the equipment that would be on the panels?
Maybe the backside of the top of the panels would probably be about eight feet.
About eight feet? And the only reason I ask that is because bottom line, they did have, they did have, excuse me, I'm sorry. They did have Med Flight laying there at one point in the field. So I was a little concerned, you asked about lights or whatnot, if usually they, I mean, pretty fast.
They use the soccer field for the access? Okay, it's good to know.
You said it's a landing zone?
No, it was only because a little girl got hurt, got playing soccer. So it did land there, so I just thought it would be.
Okay, excellent. Robert, if you want to take a second, this is some of the paperwork, so this is where we discussed the heights of the fences and. The 20-foot access.
All the neighbors were all good with the abreviate and whatnot, the number?
That's why we added that, the fence where.
This guy specifically lives with a fence.
So that's why, only in that section they're proposing the white vinyl.
This might have to go in front of conservation with the fence, maybe, just to get an approval of the fence or? Because it's in the 100-foot buffer?
Yeah, we may need to do a request for determination with them. And there's also the stormwater permit that I think we follow under, under the stormwater regulations that I've seen, which goes through, I think that goes through conservation as well. So we'd probably handle that all together with them prior to construction.
Do you want to see this rec or are you good?
Oh, yeah, excellent. I forgot you weren't having.
Brendan, just so that you know, like we were just reading the 2015 approval letter with all the items that we were talking about, the seven-foot fence on Bryant's and the abreviates and all that, they're all listed on here.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You bet. So they have to wait for eight days anyways, right?
Um.
For a little while.
I have this, alright, we'll still open this up here. Any other questions on the board? Anyone in the public, any questions, comments, concerns? Okay.
I think it's a great idea, I wish I could do it in my property.
Sounds like a solid endorsement. Alright. And as far as the difference in the plan, and I assume that this would still be, the board would still feel a review would be required?
Yes.
I don't feel the same way.
Well, that's what we would start to do all the time really.
Okay.
Just to keep it fair.
Alright, I see no issues with it, we would like this to go to peer review.
Is that Amory, is that the person, I saw that on the internet.
Yes, exactly.
We've worked with him on other reviews in the past, so, I mean, that's fine, no problem with that.
Okay. And as far as concerns from the board, I don't think, I think we've addressed most of them and appreciate taking the time to go back to see our decision before. I think it really helps, you know, keep this going, and I see no issues other than the review.
Just getting the review, okay. So just let us know what we need to submit for, you know, the account to pay.
Exactly, yeah, so if you can contact Joanne.
Yeah, I will have Becky email you and get the, we'll get that to you as soon as possible, once you get an estimate from them. Do you want us to send it right to, is it Pat, I think, over there?
It is.
Yeah, we can send them, did you already send it to him?
You send it to us.
Okay. And like the plans and stuff, the PDFs of all the plans, has that gone to him directly yet or?
That has not yet, no.
Well, if we need to send it to him, we can too.
Okay, excellent.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you need to tell them the rest of the board's comments, just so they're aware?
And the comments to make, to get them, or that they have already been made?
No, then we have 30 days from June 7th to get the comments from all the other boards, and that's the only other thing, that would be anything that might come up, that we might bring up later.
No, I understand, that's pretty straightforward procedure. I think it's from June 6th to July 6th, is that?
I think it's stamped the 7th, I'll look, yeah.
Can you give us a motion to send it to the peer review, or you just automatically do that?
It's custom for them to, this one where it was, it was questioned whether it was a change or an entirely new project, that's the only reason I brought it up.
Would it be possible to get back before you on the 7th of July, or does that depend on the review?
Just depending on the review, and that's, as far as I'm concerned, that would be the only thing, as far as the timeline or a holdup.
Okay, alright, we'll work, make sure we work with him as quickly as we can, if he's got comments, and hopefully we can be back here before, you know, before you on the 7th, your next.
Yeah, that would be perfect, and then keep it going, certainly.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, next matter would be the discussion for Isabel Simos.
I don't think she's here.
For 12 Sherwood Drive. Oh, that's probably the entire.
Well, I think there's another one too. Okay, so.
I told him with a picture, it's right on top.
Okay. Joanna, these just photos similar to the ones that we had last, that have a better, that just show more?
They're a little more ground level.
Same area, same subject?
Still the treetops?
Yeah.
They had some nice trees.
Careful and stagnant this one. Is that a new letter?
Yeah, so I'm just going to read this for, read this for the board. The questions to the board, thanking us in advance for addressing them. Stated in the previous emails. Husband and I own the property at 12 Sherwood Drive. According to the meeting minutes, the drainage easement is unfinished. Ed Johnson is responsible for completing the work. Is there a plan for a deadline for him to finish the work on this easement? Two, should there be a fence around the easement for safety? This leads me to my third question. Three, suddenly in the early spring, the overgrowth of vegetation prevents the water from draining properly. After even one day's steady rainfall, the easement comes very close to overflowing and takes days to drain. This is a concern because of, as of now, there is nothing stopping small children, pests or wildlife from falling in. Our second concern is the possibility of the overflow eroding our driveway over time. Is there a plan for the town to maintain the easement after completion? So if we want to just address those in order. The plan for a deadline for him to finish the work. I'm going to review the minutes to see if there was one set forth of that. So on August 16th, 2018, we discussed that Autumn Lane had not been completed, and that the developer had submitted an as-built review by the board, but had not been approved by the town. And then on September 20th, 2018, there was a request of the board to contact the developer for a status update on remaining pipe domains.
When was it, September what?
September 20th, 2018.
And that's when they returned 10,000, half of the bond also, on the minutes from September 20th, 2018, bond?
Yep, keeping enough money in the account to ensure the developer continues to move forward. And then on the next page is where we discussed the status update. Unless anyone sees anything different, I do not see where we have a deadline in place for the work.
It didn't make reference that they would like to keep enough money in the account to ensure the developer continues to move forward for acceptance through the board of selectmen. Do we have any correspondence for them as far as dates or anything like that, when it would be completed? I don't, it says through the board of selectmen.
So the board of selectmen would be the part responsible for the acceptance of the road by the town after it gets the as-built approved through us. That would be the next step for them.
Do we know if the last top coat was put on?
Yes, that was August 2017. I have that in my receipts right there. Or at least that's what it looks like to me. Peter Palmary, construction inspection prior to paving, 9/12/2017. Construction inspection for the top course of pavement. Looks like it was done 9/13 and 9/14/2017. Prepare and submit report. Um, looks like it was done nine thirteen and nine fourteen, two thousand and seventeen, prepare and submit report to the planning board.
What's the date on that one? Does that one says that the top coat is, is not done?
What, what was that?
Yeah, so.
The, the, the date I see on that is two thousand and eighteen?
So.
And you said it was.
What do you see on that?
Alright, we may have to take a look, cause unless, there are multiple roads in the subdivision.
Like the third or fourth day. Yes, see, that's what I'm figuring, but they specifically make, uh. Make mention to Highland Estates. Sherwin developer has submitted the as-built on four, all houses built.
And then it goes to daily away.
Yeah, they're ch, yeah, that's, okay, it's a whole completely different location, yeah.
Sorry, yeah. So then, is this top coat, you're thinking maybe?
Well, that's what I thought it wasn't, but like you said, who you pointed it out there, that's, uh.
That switches.
Daily away, alright.
It is so neat, oh, you know what, so Highland and Sherwood. Inspection paving reports.
Okay, cool, so I'm gonna have to do that all the way.
So this is, no, that's okay, so is that, that is not the same thing then, cause it's Autumn Lane we're looking for, correct?
Right, well, yeah, here it says Highland Estates right here is completed.
Alright, so then, the paving was done on other streets, not that one.
So as we sit here, has it been conveyed to the town at this point or no?
I am not actually sure on this.
So you think we should write a letter to the selectmen and ask them if they've?
Well, I, I think that makes the difference from what I understand, hey, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I thought if it's been conveyed to the town, then it's, the town maintains it.
Yes.
Right?
Correct.
Is that correct? So if it's been conveyed, but as far as the fence goes, I should think if it was on the original plan that was submitted, whether a fence or not was required at the time.
It should have been, it should have been the as-built.
So, that, that's the thing, is that if it won't get past the as-built, if, if, if there was a fence proposed that was not installed.
When I looked this afternoon, I did not see a fence make mention on it, but.
I don't see a lot of, um, drainage easements with fences.
Well, that's, I kinda mean, didn't that say that, I know that we do have them, i- it's just rare because it's better for the engineered design, a smaller slope. And not include the fence. So, the drainage easement would be back on seventh or fifteen?
But, if you're coming in from.
Does it, uh, depend on the site and the plan also, sorry, okay, uh, whether they require a fence, cause I know like.
It's a ratio of how the land goes, so like.
Well, it depends on, Steve, if you ever really see a slope, you'd have to fence it.
The only one I know of is, is on, uh, what is it, is it Clyde Old Bosworth has a fence around there, and way in the back.
In the back, yeah.
And it's so steep.
And it's, is pretty steep.
Yeah.
And as far as I know.
So I didn't, so that's how it's determined?
Off the top of my head, that is the only one in town, I mean, there's just going off the top of my head.
Yeah, I was trying to think if I saw another one, that was the only one I could think of.
And like you say, it's because of the, the slope on the inside.
So. This, this is sheets four to twelve.
Yeah, four to twelve, so I, this is, or, I'm not sure if it's.
Cause you come in and then it's Sherwood and it comes out here somehow, like there, right?
Ah, I just saw this drainage easement, assumed that's.
Yeah, no, that's, so that's Arrowhead, that's back off the back of, and we're here. Cause that, right?
I believe this is Sherwood right there, isn't it?
Yeah, Sherwood Drive, and then it goes into Arrowhead.
So that's, that's, I'm sorry, so that's the retention pond she's referring to?
That, that I know.
This is probably where the houses are, so I'm thinking sheets four to twelve, where are those?
I got twelve here, which is Arrowhead, go into Kestrel, which is here. And that is Sherwood, yeah, Big Berry.
I think that this is the older one I'm in, um, because it doesn't show out, so this is probably the wrong one, right?
Um, this is definitely not complete. The, so, this being Sherwood, this being lot one. Own the property at twelve Sherwood Drive, which we, we have to assume is one of these four. This one might not even be.
It would go in the corner and then there's extent.
Uh, well, if it's specifically that, uh, the last name, what is it, Simone, we, oh, wouldn't go by, wouldn't go by that.
We don't have, we don't have, yeah, we can't cross-reference this, the only thing that we can do is we know that if this is Sherwood Drive, these would, these would be the only three that would hold a Sherwood Drive. Address, this one, your frontage would face Highland, so it's got.
But this, in fact, is the, is the retention pond, that other street that goes out to, uh, Kestrel, was it Arrow something? The rear property, uh, may have butted, you know, so it could be over there or all, depends on.
So, we're gonna have to check, cause this may be a different phase, because if you look on this, this isn't even the same property anymore. But this is.
Sherwood Drive extension, would not be the extension. Yep, two thousand and eighteen, alright, so that needs to go in that folder.
Gotcha.
These are the covenants, uh, did I take back that folder, that one with the receipts I showed you? I think so, right?
It was a yellow folder with?
Oh, it's in here, okay, I just don't wanna miss anything, no, those were as, but.
Oh, you wanna hold it?
Yep.
Do you wanna see what you, there's, there's the plan and I'll look at the words.
Because the original subdivision even updates me, it goes back to like ninety-nine. It doesn't seem like that's at all, but, uh, it is. Yeah, this is, um, okay, so, here we go, this, this is the, this is the thing.
Yes, this is it.
So originally where I was saying that we, um, had the, the three lots that would be Sherwood, then they extended it onto that other piece. So, let's find out where the drainage easement is.
Anything that looks like a weekend's report on the end?
So, what do we got, we got a sixty-five and a sixty-two.
Right.
Yeah, so, um, chances, there is not a fence proposed on this plan and I don't think one would have been required at all.
How, how deep is the basin?
It's, it's three feet.
Three feet.
From, from top to bottom, which is over a distance, it's over three to ones, yeah.
What, what's the, um, the line mark that they usually require? You said it was.
It would have to be.
I think it's like four?
Yeah, but minimum, minimum three to one.
Three to one is, yeah, so, uh, it may be anything greater than three to one. But three to one is, is what you use to stabilize earth without retaining walls or anything. So, it, I believe that we've now at least tackled question one, which is, as of right now, we do not seem to have a deadline. Um, question two would be the fence. And question three is really a matter of, once the road is approved, the responsibility would be the town's.
Is there some kind of a maintenance schedule for that basin?
Yeah, it would be in, there's a, another packet that would be with this, that would include the maintenance.
Which would basically be?
It, it would mention what types of. Yeah, so, there should be an entire document. So, it may be in this. It's one times, it's one package.
Make a difference, if it's conveyed to the town, then it's maintained by the town, but if there's a, like a homeowners association, does that make it completely different?
Yeah, different, cause it's not owned by, that'd be all private.
No, that, you could have, still have a homeowners association that's deeded in through a subdivision, even though the subdivision road has been accepted by the town and the town would be responsible to maintain.
So the town would maintain the road.
They would still maintain it, you would just have the, the, how, the. Yeah, you'd still be held by whatever the association would just, you know, have other limitations on it, but as far as ownership of the road, it would still be.
Even if it looked like the, I know, maybe dumb question.
No.
But I know some of them, uh, the retention pond itself is on a lot that's owned by somebody, like say on the cul-de-sac as opposed to a separate independent lot that maybe the homeowners association.
Takes care of it.
Takes care of it.
I thought it looked like it was on its own lot, but let me look again.
Yeah, like, uh, pass your way not to get them more confused, that's on somebody's lot.
Almost always it is, so, it's typically not its own deeded area, so the, the drainage, and you can almost tell, because if it is an easement and not a drainage lot, so there would be a designation on the plan. If it was to be a drainage lot, it would be labeled such, and then whoever owns the development would always own that lot.
Yeah.
Whereas if it was a drainage easement, that means someone else actually owns, owns, and then it's a deeded easement and then.
To maintain it.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
So, on November second, two thousand and seventeen.
Why can't this be simple?
Well, it makes sense to be, it makes sense to be an easement, why would the developer wanna have to take care of that lot forever?
Exactly, no, nobody wants to, so, that, that's usually not its own separate entity unless it would be, so where we don't have a real.
I agree, I agree, it seems always an easement.
Yeah.
Well, here's, here's somewhat of an answer, so on October thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen, Steve Haywood said in response to, um, some issues that were brought up by the planning board. That, um. Steve rece, received a call from twelve Sherwood Drive and she was concerned about the retention pond next to her house. He explained to her that the town hasn't accepted the road, obviously this was before that, right? And they can't fix it, but he would come back and look at it and tell the building inspector or the planning board if he sees a problem. He took pictures, they're not here, um. And. He took the pictures because I can see future problems here, the retention pond has a couple of places that has run of problems. No backfill on street or sidewalk, sidewalk already cracked and the trees are going to be a problem in the future. So that was October thirty-first, seventeen, on November second, the planning board discussed. It and on the basin itself without, it says that, um, the basin has been cut and there were some touch-ups done where there has been runoff and washout, tried to put down sod but didn't take, will continue to loam and seed.
Meaning the town would continue to loam and seed.
The developer.
This looks like the developer, cause this is a planning board, um, document now in response to Steve Haywood's phone call from twelve, sorry if I didn't state that correctly. Um. He did move the trees that were in question, um, I can read it fully if you want me to. So it looks like, he looks like, it looks like the tree is where he moved as well. So I get to the sod.
I don't actually see the, the maintenance program, it, it may in fact be in that huge.
So the town has, has approved and accepted that road?
Cause, I do not know the.
We should ask, I think that's the first question that we're gonna ask.
I mean, the town's approved and accepted the road, but there's nothing we can, nothing we can do really.
Yeah, I think we, we can assume that they have not. Um, so I, I think that in order to address the, the three issues, um, I think the, I think, um. I believe we should reach out to the last contact, which it looks like it may be Welby Builders. Um, to discuss a timeline for the completion, which takes care of the first question. Um, second question being the fence, I think we can assure her that, uh, no fence is required. And the, third question can be answered by, um, once.
Yeah, we have the answer for number one.
Yeah, yeah, because if, um, the town's not gonna accept it without it being proper, so if he has to do any work. Prior to us accepting it, that'll have to be done, and then once we accept it, we'll be maintaining it.
According to this then, is it the correct understanding, we still have half of his deposit, we still have ten thousand dollars of his?
I have no reason to think not, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it sounds like we, we're still holding a ten thousand dollar bond, we haven't accepted the road, therefore I think we should reach out. And see if we can get a, a timeline on this and we can let her know that, um, as soon as that timeline, you know, if we can get one.
It's released.
Okay, so we only really, we had twenty, so we did, we, we released ten and held ten. I wish I could remember if Don Gillespie is Welby Builders, but unfortunately, I don't know.
Don Gillespie and Paul Sherrill, Welby Builders, P O Box Cross, yeah.
Okay. Okay, um, I think if, if we can get, and show that to Joanne and if, I think that's what we should request is a, a timeline from them.
From Welby.
From Welby, and it looks like we have contact information there.
So why are they saying Ed Johnson's responsible for it?
I believe Ed Johnson owned it at one point, um, which may go back as far as seventeen or eighteen, but the, the only one that I've dealt with is Welby.
Right.
So I believe he now owns it. And I think that's the best way to address the issues.
I think that's, I agree, so do we make a motion to do that or so moved?
Yeah, I think, moved, I think Joanne will get in contact with her and.
Do you have any questions on any of the questions, you wrote them all down, you know, where we're going?
Yeah, just a minute.
Just out of curiosity, does it sound like ten thousand dollars would cover? Yeah, the remainder would cover the?
Rick.
Depends on what has to be done.
Yeah, so if it's strictly clearing.
Yeah.
The vegetation, I, I see no concerns, I do know that there was a spot where we had a board member who happens to live in, live in the subdivision who said that there was squats where the curb had not been backfilled. So if there are issues like that, um. I think they have been addressed, I don't know that, so hopefully the ten thousand covers that a lot.
Should we do some sort of a site visit?
Um, I don't know that we necessarily need to do it as a board, but if any, you know.
To do what, I'm sorry?
A site visit to look at everything?
Just to see the conditions, to see if there is anything greater than the maintenance on the drainage.
Wouldn't, wouldn't we need somebody like Steve or someone to show us, okay, this isn't right, this is right at all?
But still, the question, the question is, what, you know, what is a required maintenance on that basin? I mean, a lot of them are designed just to have vegetation grow and soak up the water, some have to be mowed and, it all depends, I mean, that's, it's a retention basin, so it's supposed to leach into the ground.
So it's probably.
Yeah, so no, no interior stuff, but it, usually that's all it is, it's just veget, vegetated and there is, if, I did not find it, I don't know, sometimes it's in the drainage report, in the back, but I didn't see it. Sometimes the maintenance schedule is, is part of that, but. Um, even though I wasn't here, whenever we, we approved that, as a board approved that subdivision, we would have had that information, there would have been a maintenance schedule.
Who, so would, would the motion better off to do contact, have the contact, the developer to contact Steve Haywood to meet with him to determine what needs to be done to finish the project?
No, be, um, with, like, not that he's not a good resource, but he's not, um, that's really not his jurisdiction, if you know what I mean, so as far as whatever needs to be done by the plan i- is us.
So he should come, come here?
So he, well, he does. So he, well, he doesn't, he would need that inf- like, he knows because he's got the plan and owns the thing. So if any of the works there, he would know, if he knows, like the builder himself.
Right. I guess that if you know the board couldn't put us off again, y- you know, let's sit here and get it done, you know?
Right.
Yeah, I agree.
It'd be great if he came here and, you know...
Man, are all the houses completed that road, or are they still building there, or what?
We, we could...
They're done.
I, I think everything is done.
I think everything is done, too.
So I, we, we could, instead of asking for a deadline, or we can ask for a deadline and also invite him in? If, if, you know, there's nothing wrong with that.
So it seems like he just needs to take care of the detention basin if it's a problem with it, or the retention basin, and then back up the curving and stuff and seed it and get his ten grand, right?
So would it be just as easy to send a letter, please do that, or should you need to?
Maybe have to drive by and take a look, see exactly what's going on.
Like you said, what does he need to really come here and us to tell him, if we tell him a letter, let's get it done, you know, put us to bed?
I just, I believe firmly that the only person who really is to say what needs to be done is we'd have to have the review engineer go out there and do a, you know what I mean? I, I don't think we need that. That seems a little too far at the, at the moment. I think that hopefully we can handle this with, ask him for a deadline, invite him to come in if he would like to discuss it.
Sure.
So Joanne, if you could add, you know, that, um, he's also welcome to come in and discuss if he would like.
All right, so do we need to put that in a formal motion?
I don't believe so.
I suppose we could see what his response is to the letter, and then if we have to go and take further steps from there, that's what we'll do.
It seems like the, yeah. All right, as long as we agree, that's a solid first step. And other than the fact that we need the feedback, we, I believe, addressed the three concerns.
I can't see any maintenance anywhere.
Yeah, so I didn't see it either, but it's...
Most, most basins don't wanna have to maintain if they want something to do that.
It's usually just, it'll say what type of grass and, uh, potential mowing.
In the same group, too, I can't understand why a developer or anybody just move for that matter. If we're holding ten thousand dollars, why would want it? You know, let's, let's do it, get rid of it, and get my money back, you know?
So does any of this?
It's ten thousand dollars of one grand, though, you know?
Yeah, maybe there's ten grand worth of work that, you know?
You think so?
This is just storm, stormwater construction, Mark. It doesn't, right, this doesn't state anything.
No, it, it will both, most likely be a, a written packet.
These are on it.
Yeah, so this, a lot of times you don't think about this.
You're saying what? What did you say?
I didn't think you were gonna do this much book reading.
This is...
Yeah. Get an extra five and a half hours to... But most maintenance schedules are standard, like monthly or every two months or three months.
And this is the last...
Yeah, say, three months throughout there.
This is...
It's a standard thing.
Was this stuff from that file I had?
That's not, it's not really that.
I just don't wanna like mix anything up, song, make and show on.
Because it's, most of them are designed to, to be minimal work. You know, no one designs them to be...
All right, I'll fold that up. I didn't see anything.
Yeah, lots of times you see it's on, it's on something's property.
I didn't, I didn't either, yes. I didn't see them either, but I didn't know the, you, with, with the...
See, my son's like, my son owns the town.
I didn't know she saw something I didn't, cause I have this, too, but I, it's all cap- all calculators. It's all just calculators. It's, it's not, I rent it.
Now, I don't know as you sit here, if, I assume that if history, it is, was conveyed to the town, cause the... Then what do you, if it's conveyed to the town, what do you need an association for?
Um, typically, the homeowners association is to usually to set stipulations for, you, you could have everything from house color to height of bush.
Yeah, but I mean, as far as a, a reten- a, a retention pond goes, I know, the only experience I have is my sons, and they mow it. That's about the full extent of it.
Oh, all right, and but the, the association, so... So it, is it condos?
No, single-family homes.
And they...
What town, Hanover?
Hanover.
Oh, okay.
So Hanover may allow private roads, and maybe that's the difference? Maybe it is not accepted by?
Was the town plowed?
Yeah, yeah, but it, the town has to plow a private way, too.
The, the town, usually they always do.
They have, they have to. Emergency equipment has to be able to go down every road, ambulance, fire.
But not if they're not responding.
That means I can have a plow in my driveway.
Yeah, so, eh, with the...
By the way.
But typically, the, the towns try to serve all their residents. So there are a lot of cases where the town does not accept the road, but the townspeople still provide all those services.
Yeah.
You know?
But as a fun fact, you can't get a VA loan for a private road.
Yeah.
But there's a private road and there's a driveway. Yours is a driveway.
Mine's a private road, it's a two-lot settlement. It's a private road.
Oh, I thought it was, sure, you will, I know. Oh, well.
All right, I believe, as long as, thanks, bro.
I could have them do it.
Hold on, hold on.
Cause it is Ed John, yeah, 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 yeah.
Yep. All right. Boom. All right, moving on. Okay, next matter for discussion. We have the status of Pasture Lane. I do not know, did we get anything in correspondence for that?
Pasture Lane, um, we got something from Kuzo Fire Department. He was looking into...
Could I just...
Which is...
Okay, yeah, so did everyone see that, the, uh, the checklist for the request for legal services? This is something that I assume has been implemented in the last year. I, I don't recall having that or any other time that we had asked for, uh, the legal services.
I've never seen it before, yes.
The path is for probably, I'd say, at least six months.
Okay.
Because I can use it one other time. So you can't, we used to directly go to the legal council, but now we can't do that. We have to go through the selectman's office, you know?
Okay, and that is new, right?
We did have to go to the selectman before, but not within the...
Yeah, last couple of months, anyway.
Okay.
Remember.
So I, I still...
Remember we asked for town council five times.
It's been a while for them to get that for, so I put in a second request. I asked again, and then I finally got it. Just like I was saying, it was just as I was going out the door, and him said, you just got the phone call from one of the selectmen, and I said, okay.
Okay.
And I was like, oh, I think he's, you know, we're lucky.
Yeah, I personally think that's important, because it is so much different from, well, like, the year where, this retention pond is actually on somebody's lot. It's not a independent, so I, I don't even pretend to know how that works.
No, I, I, I think that this was the right path.
Yeah, to take. We should have to wait, then, till we hear from powers above?
Yep. Okay, so I think that's the...
But should we just say that the Fire Department's looking in, um, about the brush in the water retention area, and he's gonna look into...
He did answer that. He sent the letter.
Yeah, you read it, yeah. Did you see that? So, um, I'll just read it out loud. It said, um, hey Tina, cause that's the homeowner that emailed Jeff Kuzo, says, can you forward me your email about the brush files on Pasture Lane? While it can be considered a fire hazard, I have to do research whether or not it violates any fire safety codes with the state. It is on, is it on somebody's property? Or is it just lying adjacent? And her reply was, it's on the bank of the water retention area. It is owned by Five Pasture Lane. So that's that easement thing.
Last time I drove by, you know, it was a, there was a lot of brush, but there was also an awful lot of just stumps. It almost looked like a truck drove down the street and dumped a bunch of stumps up there.
The stumps did not come from there?
That's what I'm thinking, huh? And, and how do you tell that? How, how do you tell where they came from, you know?
Yeah, but you got the impression that there were no large trees, but stumps.
If they came off the property or some jerk just came down and dumped them? Cause they are literally, like, right on the sidewalk, then onto the property. It's like, right, it's not like they're way, ways, way back. They dug them out and tried to hide them. They, they're right there on the street.
Yeah.
Yeah, so unfortunately, I think when, where it's been left in the, the condition that there is a chance that someone found that as an opportunity. It may have nothing to do with the builder, if you know what I mean.
Yeah.
Joanne, did we get something, too, from, uh, from the regarding Pasture Lane about that Lot One? Didn't they do some kind of perk testing or whatnot? He dropped it off, Bob dropped it off today?
No, it wasn't on Pasture Lane?
I thought it was.
He dropped off, um...
Was it, uh, no, no, it wasn't Pasture Lane. It was, uh...
No, it was the, the new, um, lot, the one that's...
Yeah, the Lot One.
Five ninety-two.
I thought it was, I thought it was he, he had soil samples and stuff.
From five ninety-two and then zero.
He dropped. Oh, I thought it was, uh, I thought it was Pasture Lane, Lot One.
I went and asked him about the...
Oh.
No, this, this is what, it, it goes to zero to five ninety-two now.
All right. Okay, thank you.
All right. I, I think we will, yep. Well, I believe we will be on to bills.
I'll make a motion to pay an Amory Engineering bill for invoice number one five eight 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 A in the amount of fourteen hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety-one cents.
Just to be clear, is, is the, the total for all three, the amount? Okay.
Do you want me to itemize them? Cause I can, um, plan review for three nineteen Monp- Ponset Street was six hundred and eighty-four dollars. Oh, s- excuse me. Um, invoice one five eight eight B was six hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety-one cents for one fifteen River Street. And then invoice number one five eight eight C for a hundred and fourteen dollars for construction services to Pasture Lane in the amount of fourteen hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety-one cents.
Okay, I have a motion to pay the bill to Amory Engineers for the three invoices totaling fourteen thirty-two ninety-one.
So it feels like I did something, Joe.
Well done. We got a good second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Well done. And next, I just wanna take a second to review the, the letter to Gordon. I didn't get a chance to do it in the, in the, I didn't see it.
And I was looking for that.
So it'd be in the back to correspondence.
Should I read it out loud for the public, or?
And... It, yeah.
Um, this is a letter for Gordon Andrews, our former chair. Um, Gordon, as your time as a member of the Halifax Planning Board has come to a close, we would like to express our sincere gratitude for your service over the years. You have been a wonderful addition to this board with your careful deliberation, seriousness, and dedication to all the matters that came before us, no matter how difficult. We appreciate your time, skill, and wisdom, and you will be missed. We wish you the best in our future endeavors, in your future endeavors, and look forward to staying in touch for years to come. Thanks again, sincerely, Mark, Amy, Rick, Brendan, and Bert.
Excellent.
Awesome.
Do we motion to sign, or? Mark.
Yeah, you guys can all sign, certainly. All right, I'm gonna kinda skip ahead just to make two notes. Um, Brendan, if you can, if you're interested and can make it in, um, we do require your signature for the, the deeds, the registry of deeds. We also have a letter for Gordon, if you'd be interested, if you think you can make it in.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, I think obviously you can stop by if you want.
All right, excellent.
Yeah, I don't think I can drop off, um, I was originally gonna drop off that, um, that binder of the bylaws that I have, but then at the end of the last, um, meeting that we had, when they said, I don't have the most updated version, I, I wasn't sure, so I didn't get a chance to get in there and drop it off, but it didn't seem like it was a rush. I was sure by who was updated version if we still needed it. So, anyway, I'll bring it all in when I come in, Tom.
All right, cool. All right, so we have, and next would be correspondence from A D. I, the only reason I jumped here is cause I figured I'd bring it up for Brendan, because it's, kind of addresses both things.
Sorry.
No, no problem. I just kinda jumped, just to group them up. Uh, we have correspondence from A D G A Realty, Zero Plymouth Street, and Malden Rede- Development LLC for a site plan review for retail.
At zero and five ninety-two Plymouth Street, Halifax, Massachusetts, uh, S S P R S L sixty-one dash four A and sixty-one dash four.
So I believe they're waiting to hear from
The other boards.
Other boards, and I assume we will see them in the future.
So this is their application? Should we talk about it at all? I can read it out loud.
Um...
The scope of the work? I mean, this is just what they sent in?
Um, if, if we're not reviewing it, I, I think we should just wait until they're here, right? Okay, hold, hold on one sec. Um... Right.
I don't think there's any harm in reading it so that the residents...
I just don't know what, what we would discuss if they're not presenting anything to us. If, if you know what I'm saying. If they were presenting something, obviously, everybody would be open to it.
Something presented.
But, um...
That's true, too. Would be good to know what, at least what, what they're talking about.
Yeah.
Right.
Do you have plans for it already?
Yeah.
No?
Right here.
Well, you do.
June second, twenty twenty-two. This is...
Yeah, um...
So this is the antique on the corner, I cover in Plymouth.
Yep.
And this is the site here on a Saturday morning.
Did you see Rick?
I know where it is.
Did I hit a button?
Yeah.
Hey Brendan, would, do we hang up on you?
Yeah, yeah, I'll come back.
All right, how bad? Lots of people flying around over here.
I'll be.
Yeah, typically, without them presenting to us, we wouldn't discuss it. Um...
It was only on there as, as correspondence.
Yeah, that, you see what I'm saying? Yeah, that, you see what I'm saying?
Well, there's no harm in discussing it. If it's on discussion, like to just look at it.
Sure, okay.
This is all wetlands?
Yes.
We'll look for frontage up there, Kenny.
Uh, one ninety-six plus one forty-four.
Thank you.
Two, three, four, ooh, no, I, I misspoke. It's about three hundred feet. It's the one oh four fifty-five plus the one ninety-six.
One oh four, you said?
Yeah, so it's three, three and change.
So it's about, yeah, three sixty-two, three hundred point sixty-two.
And that's the wetlands buffer?
That's why it's not typical to discuss it until they present it, um, where we don't, we don't expect what it is.
Well, just, this is just a plot.
Do you guys wanna see?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, if you mind, just identify yourself first.
Fix field, uh, nine Clidawasra, across the street from. Kinda teach us a little bit on, on someone who's going to buy an area, build in that area, um, who's it go to first? Um, who gets told, uh, what kind of publicity is there? I guess from the beginning is where does this go first? You, you get a letter from this group saying that they wanna build something.
Yeah.
But you're not sure yet. Now, did they ask, did they send letters to other boards?
They usually come to us first, right?
Yeah, typically, we are the first step, um, but it all depends on what they're proposing. There are certain things where they know they can't go to us and they have to go right o- over us.
But at some point, they do have to go. It's not like.
Not on all pro, not on all projects, but, but most. Typically, typically, it would come to us first.
Yeah, you're not, yeah, you're not able to.
No, no. So, um, once they come to us, and then we send it out to review from all other boards, um, and then we can also discuss what other boards they need to go. Sometimes we can refer them to someone else, and sometimes the things that get proposed to us aren't for us to act on. Um, but it is typical for it to come to us first.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, in other words, it could go to the zoning board first. Is that what you're stating? And then come to the planning?
Depending on what they're proposing, yes.
Okay. If it's like a plaza type building, somebody wants to come in and bring it to town, the normal procedure would that go in front of the planning board for us?
Planning board, certainly. Yeah, so if it was something that needed, say, the Board of Appeals because of the nature of the request, then, then sometimes we don't see those. Um, but on, on a typical building or, um, any, uh, so, any subdivision of, of land, um, and almost all proposed work would come through us, e- even a change in use and some.
Is this the earliest of the stage?
Yeah, so I haven't even, yeah, this is, like, yeah, so usually.
I kinda figured it was, I just, but you figure we gotta.
Yes, so the reason I'm, I'm hesitant to, to jump on it is, is we don't even know what they're doing yet. I like to, you know, it's best to have whoever's coming in to, to tell us what they're looking for, rather than us look into the plan and try to come up with something.
So if they, um, if they went to the zoning board before you, would the zoning board keep you up abroad of what they're looking for? Or are you just like waiting for somebody to tell you that?
So typically, we, there is a lot of sharing of information i- i- in the town hall. Um, depending on the type of project, if it was something that they thought that came under our purview, we would definitely be made aware of it.
Before it's too late.
And also, uh, part two of your question, uh, butters would have to be of three hundred, three hundred feet of the, uh, from their, yes, within three hundred feet in all directions are considered, uh, butters.
I figured that too, yeah.
So they, you, and then they do have to post two weeks prior to we're here and, uh, in the newspaper.
But not for a site plan?
Not, not for a site plan, but, but, but in other types of, of things.
Okay, cause I know this meeting wasn't posted in the Halifax local newspaper. So, would you know what newspaper it definitely would go in for the residents to look for?
That would only be if we had that type of meeting. So if this required a public hearing, then there would be the notification period in, in all of the, the mailings and the advertisement. Um, for a typical, just review of a plan that requires no, if, if it's something that they're proposing that is by right, then there, those things would not apply.
Okay, um. Also, with this whole planning thing they're looking at that they wanna propose, they haven't proposed it as of yet, is that correct?
Yeah, they haven't presented it to us.
They haven't presented it to the planning board? Have they presented it to any other department in the town?
Not that I know of. Most likely, in this situation, we were the first.
Okay.
Based on the, the nature of their proposal. Th- this is the right way to go is us first and.
Right, we're trying to assume that we're the henies.
So the reason they didn't come here tonight is one of the requirements of site plan is that the other boards in town have thirty days to submit anything. Like, so the Board of Health already submitted what they think of it. The conservation will do it and, and the zoning board will do it, and you send written.
And did that apply to the residents in the town also?
You have more than thirty days. You have, you can come to the meetings and, um, state things, and you can also write letters.
Okay.
Did you just say that, um, some boards have, got back to you on this?
We have Board of Health, we have.
It should be public record.
Yes.
Yeah, it, it certainly all will be. Um, like I said, I, we can, I guess, I don't see what helps because like I said, without, without knowing their proposal, it's, it, it's tough to apply those things, but we certainly could, and that will definitely be read into record, and that will be.
Yep.
Um, yep.
And is it typical that the, um, conservation and the EPA and all those people would be involved if there's a question of wetlands and animals that are on the engaged species list on that.
Conservation, sure.
Um, all those different departments. I'm not gonna name all, because it's still too early, but.
It'll be high.
Yeah.
Linda Saviano, six thousand and eleven. I just have a question about when, I know it was listed today under, however you categorize it. So do we, how, other than some newspaper, how would we know when it comes up again?
Okay, so again, if there was a public hearing, then you would get the notification, um, it would be in the newspaper.
The Halifax. I don't know what newspaper. I don't get that.
Okay, and then.
Like, can I just put the minutes online and they would show?
The minutes, and I'm not a hundred percent sure about the board that is now upfront, the, so I believe that you would see at least that we were having a meeting. I don't know if our m- agenda is posted.
Our agenda is posted forty-eight hours before.
Yeah, I saw it.
Okay.
So.
Uh, on the website.
On the website.
You, yeah, you can go to the Halifax, um, website, and on the home page down the bottom, there's the meetings that are gonna happen that night and over the next several days. You can also click on the calendar that's under that, and you can see when other, like, next week, what's happening and things like that. Attached to the meeting notification, if it's within forty-eight hours, will be a link that you can link on, uh, click on, and it will open up our agenda.
Boy, they gotta make it easy.
Yeah.
So, all right.
Yes, so, so then if you do see us in appointments and hearings, I feel.
Next meeting is July seventh.
Okay, so you already know the next meeting is July seventh?
We meet the first and third Thursdays of every month.
So we're just gonna wait and see if they decide to give a note.
I would certainly assume that they're coming next one. They wanted to wait so we had our, you know, all the, the comments from the other boards. They wanted us to have them first. It skips the time, cause otherwise, they, they, if they were here tonight, the first thing that I would've said to them is, we need to wait until we hear from the other boards. We need the thirty days. It would be the first thing I would say because it's, so.
Yeah, so, so actually, they, we received this stamp on June thirteenth, so we probably won't see them until.
Do we already have septic approved?
No.
Um, July twenty-first.
July twenty-first.
So if you guys, yeah, if you wanted to make note, that would be most, most likely, they would be on the twenty-first. Yeah. This?
Um, this one right here is, hold on, I just read it. It's business for sure, but, um, commercial and business district, uh, so it says, um, construction of a two-story office, retail building in the commercial and business district.
Um, right across the street, it went residential business. I believe my property is listed, yeah, uh, commercial.
It, it may be because of its proximity to one oh six.
Yeah.
I think we have a, a strip that's a few hundred feet or a hundred feet off of the road the whole way down, or most of it. Um, but i- in town, we also, almost all of our zones are dual. Almost all of our zones are residential, agricultural, business, you know, residential.
So their intent is commercial, retail?
A plaza is what I heard. And like a Walgreens, a gas station, a restaurant, stores, this is a, a old plaza.
How does that work?
Hold on, hold on, if we could, please, please.
My name's Stephanie Davis.
Stephanie Davis.
I'm right across the street. How, how big is that parcel, man? And how much are they proposing to use?
Okay, so the property is, it's a hair under ten acres, nine point nine nine six acres.
How much of that is wetland?
Almost all of it. All, I would say such a large majority that.
There should be a percentage listed on it.
Well, it's a swamp up there, please.
How about we just show it?
Yeah, enough to the.
It's a swamp. I mean, I've been, I've been out there, but we're talking about that.
Yeah, I mean, we all know that they, they were able to get those houses across, which are, in my mind, fairly new. I, I don't know really.
So the next step is you guys are gonna notify the boards of this plan?
We, yeah, we already have, yep.
So conservation will really be up to par on this because of the box tunnels that are up back there?
Yeah, it, this is certainly going.
This is the beginning.
Through that, yeah.
So this is a long, long process.
Yes, and like I said, this, we are the first step.
Okay.
So on the ten acre, how much of that are they planning on developing?
Percentage wise?
Or acre wise?
I was looking for the percentage, and they don't have it listed here. It's not here. Yeah, so in the little car thing, it doesn't.
How can you develop nine?
Um.
Did you find it?
Again, this is something, I, I think we should just wait. Uh, if, if you're okay with that, I'd rather not answer any of those questions until they come in. We fully review the plan. Cause it, it, I'm sure it's on here, i- if you know what I mean. Plus, these are the ques, these are the questions that we're undoubtedly asking as soon as they come in. How much of this are you gonna be proposing? Where is your work? These are all things that we're certainly working through.
You, you can write down a whole bunch of questions too, that you wanna be sure we ask and email them to us.
Yeah, certainly.
So you won't be able to speak at that meeting?
No, you will.
With this town politics stuff, I have no idea.
Yeah, we'll be able to ask.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, I will open it up.
Right.
Um, but, but just, just stick with me, cause I'm gonna allow that whole entire presentation. We're not gonna interrupt. He's gonna have all his time to.
There's gonna be a lot of people here next week.
All right, so we may.
Might plan on us.
Should be, should be at a caterer.
The twenty-first, the twenty-first.
Probably.
Basically when they present.
I'll let you guys know.
It just seems most reasonable that they would wait that thirty days.
We'll be here.
And then, uh, we'll, we'll probably set up and have it on the agenda to be meeting upstairs in the great room.
Okay, great.
Just to, you know, it, it can't hurt if, if we don't fill it.
Well, thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Nice seeing you.
Thanks for putting on.
Oh, no problem.
Thank you. We're here for you. That's what we're here for. Thank you. You would?
Helps get things out here. Thank you.
This'll be sweet seventeen, right? This'll be seventeen, right?
Eighteen.
Oh, we have seventeen?
Do you want us to stay because there's nobody?
No way.
We feel unloved and rejected.
This is a normal meeting. All right.
What else we got?
So, we have notices from budding towns. And, um, which I think that if, if, yeah, if everyone doesn't mind, they can check those on their own, um.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I, I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
He's got the delay, but we know, we know what he's looking for. All right, excellent. Thanks, everybody.